I know.
Take your moment, yeah. When I left, they said 199. I was 199.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 2nd meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Roll call, please.
All five selectmen, town council, and the town administrator are pleasant this evening.
We'll do a pledge of allegiance. Mary Ann, would you like to lead us in that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna do the bonds.
As everybody knows, today is election day, and to allow our town clerk to get back to actual work, we're gonna have to have her and John Foster come up and take care of our bond issue we have, which is Article number nine C. Before we start, as far as the board goes, I'd like to thank you for all the years of service. It's greatly appreciated.
Exactly.
Oh, absolutely.
You're welcome. I appreciate it. I'm gonna miss everybody, I really am.
We'll see you in May.
Yeah.
But again, thank you. It's really appreciated.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right. We're gonna do some bonds here. And, John, you wanna fill us in?
Sure. This is the first $10 million authorization for the new elementary school. Approximately $38 million will be borrowed. This is the first $10 million to get us through to next year for the design and engineering phase. We did go out to bid, and on March 27th, we received seven bids. The low bidder was Raymond James and Associates, Inc., with a true interest cost of 2.726.
Wow, that's great.
They're the lowest bidder.
Wow.
Good. All right, I move, we approve, sign the bonds.
Second by Patrick, second by Tony.
You have to read.
You have to read all the bonds.
Have to read the whole thing.
Do we have to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Pretty much. This is a big bond.
Okay. It's actually me, so. "I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Wareham, Massachusetts, certify that at the meeting of the board held April 2nd, 2019, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appears upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that we hereby determine, in accordance with General Law C-70B, that the amount of the cost of the $90,474,183 school project authorized by a vote of the town passed October 22nd, 2018, Article 5, and excluded from the limitations of the proposition two and a half, so-called, by a vote of the town passed November 6, 2018, Question 4, not being paid by the school facilities grant, is $38,664,944. And we hereby approve of the issuance of a note."
Thirty-eight million.
Huh?
Thirty-eight million.
Thirty-eight, I said that, thirty-eight million, right? Did I say? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you said million.
Thirty-eight, did I say? I thought I said thirty-eight million. I said thirty-eight, six sixty-four, nine forty-four, right?
Yeah.
That's thirty-eight million. Okay. "The issuance of the notes and the bonds not to exceed such amounts under said General Law C-70B. Further voted that the sale of the $9,415,000 general obligation school project loan, Chapter 70B bond of the town dated April 9th, 2019," the bonds, "to Raymond James and Associates, Inc., at the price of $10,092,858.10, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on April 1st of the year and in principal amounts, and bear interest at the respective rates as follows." And the rates, I have to read.
Do you have to read that?
I don't have to read anymore, right? The rates are obviously here, and so I moved, that's what I moved.
Just so you understand, that $9,415 is because when they bid those bonds, there was a bond premium that came in with that. So we'll receive $10 million.
Right.
But we're actually only paying off the $9,415.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions from the board? Is everyone in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero.
All right, so this required me to sign this, which I just did.
Several of those.
I just did.
And then that whole big packet in front of you.
And then all of this, we all gotta sign, so.
Thank you.
We got a whole lot of signatures to do here, so. I'll just start passing them down and make sure everybody signs them all.
I hope they went in order.
There's a whole lot of signatures required. Mary Ann says, yeah, they did it. Do we have to swear at anything after we sign?
Yes, sir. We have to swear at you?
We have to swear. Well.
Not at me, but somebody. You might be in a couple of months, but not right now.
We gotta swear at somebody.
Sooner or later.
Sorry for the boring television right now, but this has to be done.
Bob could always run reruns.
Yeah, Bob could go to commercial. Do we have commercials to roll in there? Bob?
That's okay, we listen once.
I know.
I'm impressed. I'm impressed. Thank you.
Can we sing, like, "Hundred Bottles of Beer" on the wall back there, or anything? Keep the troops happy? Boy, we got enough copies here.
Yes, we do.
It's a big bond.
Uh-huh.
Oops, sorry. Now, when does that affect our taxes? Next year? I have something to look forward to.
Yeah.
These are just me, I think. Town clerk signs that one.
I go by that.
He's in his hand.
Have any funny jokes to tell? No. Because of the root.
Uh, hold on.
That's a positive.
Getting a little tighter here. There you go. The other one was just for the clerk.
Good.
Just the clerk.
Yep.
That's what I was asking.
This one is just one. Hold on. There's another one in here somewhere.
I don't know. Where are you?
Then there's another couple here, so. There's a whole lot of everything here. One more here. All right, we're getting down to the nitty-gritty now. Foster's already signed that.
Fifty-five minutes.
He's signed that.
Is there a problem parking at Onset?
No.
No.
Not at all.
That was it.
I didn't hear, I heard not a complaint about that.
Well, that's.
All right, these are all signed by you.
I said three different times, there's no issue at all.
This is all yours.
So that's it.
None. Sign the rest of those, and we're in good shape.
Not a problem.
I just spelt some rumors yesterday.
This is all me, and the rest is Foster's, so it was all signed. So we're good. So we just need that stuff to come back, and we'll be good.
Almost done with these.
Try not to miss any of the pages.
Couple more, I'll get them off to Mary and Tony. Whoops, this has got a couple. The trick one. You've got multiple.
Yeah, those ones are tight, they're real close together, so you gotta really check them.
I know.
It's just a test.
I don't think you can do this.
Those long ones' names.
Sorry.
Title bomb and Scarsiotti.
And I just.
Yeah. I signed mine pretty quick, though.
You and Alan both had five little letters.
We got those.
I got like, I got ten. What do you got?
Eleven.
G-A-N.
Yeah, we got those infamous Italian names.
Italian names.
Just put them right here, and then.
Okay.
Then you guys can figure out.
Okay, so you need to start with those, and.
Oh, no, I think she's letting Tony.
I have a system here at the door.
You got a system.
I don't want the blame on a lot of them.
There you go.
It's all fine.
Lots and lots of signatures.
So I spoke with Assistant Clerk Donna, and she said it's gonna be an interesting night for you guys. You gotta wait for the ballot boxes and the notebooks to come back.
Right.
And then she's got a tally.
Because we're gonna have so many write-ins.
Yeah. So actually, you're probably not gonna be seeing these boxes back until, what, 10 o'clock? Maybe later?
It depends on how quick they are able to go through the ballots.
Yeah.
Because remember, your machines spit the write-ins to a certain compartment, but you have to go through all the regular ballots to make sure it didn't miss a write-in.
Okay, so even the ones that don't go into the write-in bin, you gotta flip through to make sure that there isn't a write-in.
That's right. You quickly, you know, you go through it quickly, just to make sure that something didn't slip by.
Yeah.
You have to make sure, so. And it takes time.
All right. Everybody's gotta get a shorter name.
I should've brought a sleeping bag. Might be spending the night.
There you go.
Yeah, you guys are gonna have to start abbreviating.
Start abbreviating our name. We gotta get shorter names around here.
Yeah, it's like, what, a little circle or something?
You know, like a bullseye, like, wah, wah, wah.
Yeah.
I got three letters in this one.
Yeah, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna do the, we'll get them in off the slips. We'll do a preliminary, but it's gonna take time to do the write-ins. So it's gonna take, it's gonna take a minute to be official. And until it's official, nobody gets sworn in, so, yeah.
Yeah, nobody's. Yeah, we have some work ahead of us tonight.
So your suggestion is not to hang around the clerk's office tonight?
Well, you can, but it's gonna take some time. It's just gonna take time.
Suggestion would then be to have somebody else hang around the clerk's office and text everybody tonight?
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
So.
I know people bite at the bit.
They want, you know, you want the results, you want the results, but.
They gotta be the right results.
That's right.
They gotta be accurate.
That's right, so.
I don't want the Secretary of State's office calling me at home.
Especially on your way out the door.
That's right.
This is not, this is not the one you wanna blow.
No, no, not at all. I know, they pulled me back in, I know. It's Derek's plan, I'm telling you.
Nobody signed this one here.
We all missed a page.
We missed a page?
Yep, hold on, he's coming back. Yeah, well, you know, some of them were stuck together pretty good, so it makes it a little.
Little eye over there.
Will it be?
Yeah, the one with the short name.
Yes, you do.
Somebody finally caught it.
Mary Ann, it would really be aggravated if we held her over another week and she had to come back. Look at the face.
Another week?
Yeah. Ooh! Wow, zing. Yikes.
Yeah, that would be different.
Wow, that was, that was a kill shot.
Yeah.
I'll pay for it later.
Yeah.
Those are good.
Did you say you wanted a raise?
Yes.
All good?
Pretty close.
Well, while we're waiting, you know, that's one of the things, is thanking Mr. Foster and all the staff. When you look at that interest rate, that's not something we could've expected, you know, a while ago. So upgrading, the bond upgrade, all their hard work, everything, it's paid off, and it's saving this community.
Amen.
A lot of money.
Thank you, John.
Are we clapping for money again?
I have to be honest with you, Mr. Murphy knew what he was doing when he hired us.
Missed this one.
Too bad.
Peter, you missed this one.
We started a month or two.
Peter missed that one.
I started in August.
You missed this one.
I started in September.
This is you, Peter, you missed this.
Mr. Murphy knew what he was doing.
He knew what he was doing hiring you. I knew it by taking credit.
And, Tony, missed this one, and Peter, you missed one of these.
I missed one. Sorry.
Yeah. All right, so, this is Peter.
Well, I'm 11 years older than you.
Yeah, hold on. Peter, sign this, and then I'll give you that, Tony, if you'll hold on one sec, okay? And then we all missed one page, right?
Did we?
Did we?
I think you got it. I think you got it.
I gotta make sure.
I think we have a missing Tony on this one.
This was good, yeah, we have a missing Tony on one page, yeah.
On this one, yeah, that's the Tony miss.
Okay.
Okay, Tony, you sign.
Thank God. 'Cause you'd have to chase him tomorrow.
Yeah, no, no, we don't.
No, we don't wanna do that, that's right.
No chasing.
No.
Yep, I think so. I'm just gonna double-check this book, and we'll be in good shape. All right, that's good. Good, okay.
Y'all set?
We're all set.
Okay.
All the signatures are in hand.
Just need you to raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that this is your signature, and that you freely and willfully signed this document for the purpose contained in it.
I do.
We do. You're all set.
Here you go, John.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All up to you, John. Thank you, Mary Ann, again.
You're all welcome.
Thank you very much.
Remember that now, when I pick up my check.
What check?
Are you looking for a check?
Announcements.
Announcements.
Tony?
No.
Mary?
No.
Peter?
Yeah, you still got 42 minutes left to vote.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Patrick.
Okay, no.
Uh, announcements.
I'm gonna do something to the board.
Don't Trash Wareham Weekend. Alan, do you have Don't Trash Wareham's weekend dates?
Twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, something like that.
I didn't put it in the thing, so I don't have it here.
Yeah, we can do it next week.
We'll do it next week.
Okay, Toby Hospital Guild has an event. Deadline is 4:07 for an evening of jazz, food, cocktails, and prizes. South Coast Brass Band will be there, it's Thursday, April 11th, 2019, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Rosebrook Event Center. Tickets are $35. Includes upscale pub-style foods, two drink tickets, and live entertainment with the extremely popular, again, South Coast Brass Band. Bring a fan, et cetera. Next, during the event on Sunday for the Vietnam Veterans Brunch Day on Sunday, it's, they have a new piece out here from Massachusetts called "The Medal of Liberty." The Medal of Liberty, degrees of kinship. In keeping with military protocol, the Massachusetts Military Division will present one Medal of Liberty qualifying families. The Order of Presidents, I'm sorry, for the Medal of Liberty shall be surviving spouse, surviving child by seniority, surviving parent, surviving siblings, surviving nieces or nephews, thereafter, surviving kin in accordance with prevailing Massachusetts law. Where two or more persons apply for the Medal of Liberty, the medal shall be presented to the person senior in the above order. This information can be found at our Selectmen's Office and make copies in order to apply it for this particular program. Thank you on that. Also, we have from our Board of Health, a temporary policy for hemp and CBD products. This is basically for retail and food establishments. Please be advised that, per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 128, and the Commercial Industrial Hemp Program Policy established by the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture Resources, better known as MDAR, which none of us would know what that meant, any hemp products offered to patrons for consumption in the Commonwealth must be obtained from an approved farmer, processor, and manufacturer located within the state, again, within the state of Massachusetts. You cannot sell these products that are produced elsewhere. That's one of the issues that's been going on, unless otherwise authorized by federal law or the equivalent. In addition, the product must be tested by an MDAR-approved Massachusetts laboratory to determine that the THC and pesticide levels are within the standards set by the MDAR and federal regulations. The Board of Health Department advises food and retail establishments that stop selling CBD products or adding CBD to food items until those establishments demonstrate to the Wareham Board of Health that the products of sale in their establishment meet these MDAR requirements. CBD products must have documentation that the product comes from an MDAR-approved Massachusetts located farmer, processor, manufacturer, unless otherwise authorized by federal law. Documentation of approved laboratory testing for THC pesticide levels, either in an approved Massachusetts laboratory or a lab authorized under federal law. CBD added to food items. Food establishments cannot add CBD to food products unless those products have been approved by the Wareham Board of Health for sale in permitted food and retail establishments. Approval requires evidence of testing of the product by an MDAR-approved laboratory. Approved policy procedures for adding products to food items, and conspicuous posting on menus, menu boards, that the CBD is added to the products. The topic of CBD food additives has generated considerable discussion at all levels of government, but until establishments meet the above criteria, while the above criteria are somehow modified by an agency with statutory authority, it is not legal to sell CBD products in the town of Wareham. The temporary policy was adopted April 3rd, 2019, effective immediately. That's interesting. And will be revised following one-year implementation. The violation fees scheduled for this policy were the same as with the Wareham Board of Health tobacco regulations. So that's just an announcement of what's been going on, there's been back and forth in this issue, and I guess the state still has to get this thing figured out. Okay, any citizen comments? Go ahead, why don't you come up?
Oh, I was just wondering if there's a, oh, sorry.
I'm right up to one of the microphones, please.
And please give us your name.
Give us your name.
My name's Laura Dyer. I was just wondering if there's a plan to repair or replace the streetlights at Onset?
We can't answer that for you at this particular point, because that's done through municipal maintenance.
I called them. It's been over two years. Every time I call, they say it's too expensive.
Yeah, we've just set aside $49,000. They're coming in May for the ones along West Boulevard, down into South Boulevard primarily. Those are not normal streetlights, as you know. Each one of those costs has about $2,000 to $3,000 to repair, so.
Onset Avenue?
You would have to, the main ones that we're doing is west down through south, and that's going to eat up almost all of the $50,000. So if you, if you all send me an email with the ones on Onset Ave, that'd be great, and it's dsullivan@wareham MA.us.
You can also get ahold of Mary at the Municipal Maintenance. Just, sorry, you can also get ahold of Mary at Municipal Maintenance, and just give her the address of what you're looking at, and she will.
I've done that for two years.
I know, but she will let you know what's.
There's been two accidents in the past year, where people just get hit. There's children that live in the building.
I understand what I'm trying to explain is that, again, because of limited funds, they do it as they can, but at least they'll be able to give you an answer, not just ignore.
Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, as I indicated earlier, there's an election going on. We've got two members sitting here who are up for reelection. There are three candidates, so there's no guarantee when we come back next week that both of these gentlemen will be here. Could be that one of them is not. And I just wanted to thank Selectmen Troppiano and Selectmen Scarsiotti for their service, their hard work in making this a better board, and their hard work in making this a better town. Thank you, gentlemen.
You jumped the gun, kid. Okay, board comments, Tony?
No.
Mary?
No.
Peter just hit his.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so, yeah, it's, it's an election day, and you don't know whether you're gonna be sitting here next week or not. You hope you are, but you don't know for sure. And I'd like to thank the citizens of the town that have put their trust in me over the years to sit here and do this job. I hope that I've done you well, and that we've gone in the right direction. I wanna thank all these board members up here who have sat here and put up my little tiny outbursts on occasion. Little tiny ones. Outbursts on occasion, I appreciate it, and I've enjoyed working with you immensely. I don't, like I say, I don't know what'll come, but I just wanna thank everyone seriously. This has been, and always has been, something that I cherished and that I hoped that I handled with dignity and with, with seriousness, and for the people of the town as a whole. And that's what I tried to do, and I appreciate everybody, and thank you so much.
Okay. Peter kinda stole what I was gonna say in the beginning there by jumping the gun a little bit, but I wanted to thank, yeah, it's on my agenda, it's fine. I wanted to thank both our current selectmen that are up for reelection for the three years for the service they've given us, and all the help, et cetera. We've, in the last three years in particular, the town has made a lot of strides forward, and we've been, working with the town administrator, et cetera, this board has actually accomplished an awful lot, and has moved forward in an extremely positive way, and I'd like to thank both of you.
Thank you.
For all your hard work. It's not easy, people think it is, it's not.
You're very welcome.
Last piece, last week, everybody remembers I had the little bottle display up front here, which some people understood and didn't understand. When you speak to someone and tell them something, the next person tells it to somebody else, the story changes about 50% each time, so by the time it gets out to a newspaper or anything else, it's never what you actually said. So I'm just gonna make it very clear. My concern with the nip bottles sitting, we're actually sitting in front of this building where we have students, where we have teachers, where we have parents, where we have senior citizens, et cetera, people coming in for licensing for natural resources. The idea of them just sitting there, nobody picking them up, is what disturbed me. Obviously, the bottles have a 5-cent deposit for Maine, 'cause Maine passed that rule, which takes care of those things sitting around. The point I was trying to get across is we're enabling everybody by not doing anything, and that's the problem we have. We know that if Wareham was to pass a ban on miniatures, it's basically, you can do it from the licensing, for new licenses, only under the state laws, you can't do it for the old ones. That wouldn't fix any issue at all. That means everybody who pre-exists with license continue to sell the product. But what's even worse is every town around us doesn't have a ban, so it still would be here anyways. There are several places trying to put a 5-cent deposit on miniatures that is up for this particular week in elections, et cetera. They can't actually do that. They can basically vote on a referendum that, I believe it's, I've got an actual note here from someone who wrote me, it's, State Representative Randy Hunt has actually got a bill in the House about putting a deposit on miniatures, and that's the way it has to be done through the state. So I'm hoping people understand that when we try and explain some stuff, a lot of it is not just a simple yes, no, whatever, it's quite complicated. And I thought it was quite cute that people were commenting, it went from the nips to fixing the roads. and we've been, working with the town administrator, etc., this board has actually accomplished an awful lot, and has moved forward in an extremely positive way, and I'd like to thank both of you. Thank you. For all your hard work. It's not easy, people think it is, it's not.
You're very welcome.
Last piece. Last week, if everybody remembers, I had the little bottle display up front here, which some people understood and didn't understand. When you speak to someone and tell them something, the next person tells it to somebody else, the story changes about 50% each time. So by the time it gets out to a newspaper or anything else, it's never what you actually said. So I'm just gonna make it very clear. My concern with the nip bottles sitting, we're actually sitting in front of this building where we have students, where we have teachers, where we have parents, where we have senior citizens, etc., people coming in for licensing for natural resources. The idea of them just sitting there, nobody picking them up, is what disturbed me. Obviously, the bottles have a $0.05 deposit for Maine, because Maine passed that rule, which takes care of those things sitting around. The point I was trying to get across is we're enabling everybody by not doing anything, and that's the problem we have. We know that if Wareham was to pass a ban on miniatures, it's basically, you can do it from the licensing, for new licenses, only under the state laws, you can't do it for the old ones. That wouldn't fix any issue at all. That means everybody who pre-exists with a license continue to sell the product. But what's even worse is every town around us doesn't have a ban, so it still would be here anyways. There are several places trying to put a $0.05 deposit on miniatures that is up for this particular week in elections, etc. They can't actually do that. They can basically vote on a referendum that, I believe it's, I've got an actual note here from someone who wrote me, it's, uh, State Representative Randy Hunt has actually got a bill in the House about putting a deposit on miniatures. And that's the way it has to be done through the state. So I'm hoping people understand that when we try and explain some stuff, a lot of it is not just a simple yes, no, whatever, it's quite complicated. And I thought it was quite cute that people were commenting, it went from the nips to fixing the roads. Just as a quick aside, because everybody picks on Municipal Maintenance, we have the thing about the lights, etc. State of Massachusetts, the federal government basically pay, our taxes don't pay for road repair, light repair, etc. That money goes for a lot of other things to make the town actually work. The money comes from, as I say, the federal and state government. We get approximately, for all of the 351 cities and towns, $200 million a year. The actual request from the Mass Municipal Association to our government is for $300 million a year, which is actually 200 to 300 million short of actually maintaining the current structure that we have. This has been going on for almost eight, nine years now. So we are always falling behind. We're sometimes three and four years behind with any road project. The latest road projects today are a million dollars a mile, which for a lot of us means we can't really do much of anything. So I want everybody to understand that it's not that the town doesn't wanna do these things, the town doesn't have the money because they're not getting enough funds in order to maintain anything properly. And the end result is that I'm asking very simply for you to contact your state and federal representative and say, "It's about time you step up and take care of the infrastructure of this country." And that's the issue we're dealing with. And like I say, as we sit here, and we have people call about lights, we have people call about, you know, potholes, etc., and we just, we do what we can, and Municipal Maintenance does what they can. They have nine people working for a town of 22,000 people with 54 miles of roads, etc., plus a lot of private roads as well. So please understand that we are hamstrung in what we can do. Thank you.
Alright, next up is licenses, there's no appointments, so it's licenses and permits, it's 7/20 hearing. So on the application of Shellfish Grant, W. 3, of David Palin to add Philip Cherilucci. Come on down, guys.
Oh, guys. You bring us any covings today?
Hi, folks, say again, Mr. Slaven.
You're carving today?
So this is an application to add, and this isn't a public hearing, is it? No.
No, it's not. It's just...
This is to add Phil Cherilucci to David Palin's grant. Now, do I understand that you guys also, that Mr. Palin has an agreement with somebody else to farm the grant, an LLC or something that you formed?
When I went down this road three years ago, from day one, it was a 50/50 partnership with Steve Patterson, who happens to be a non-resident, which is, will be part of my explanation. We share the work, share the costs, share the profits. It's been a tremendous experience so far, and we're gonna continue. But what I've found, you see in my letter that this is an age-driven decision, what I've found is that I can't hold up to the work as well as I thought I might. I'm 66 years old.
It's a pretty tough job.
It's hard to believe, but, yeah. I went into something with no clear exit strategy. So we're looking to form an alliance, and it would be beneficial for all three of us. If Phil was a co-owner of my grant, it'll allow me to downsize. He has a very small area out there. While I downsize, he could move in and expand his operation, and whatever day I choose to leave altogether, I wouldn't be abandoning my partner, you know, who I started this whole thing with, he would continue to work, you know, allied with Phil.
So they all have kind of an agreement amongst each other.
It's a triple play, yes. Yes.
He looks like some good muscle over there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's also a little bit younger.
Bringing in the big guys. Bringing in the big guns.
Basically, gonna go from three to two eventually?
Eventually, yes. I'll be the first to go.
To go?
Yeah.
That's not always a good thing.
Alright, so I move we approve the addition of Phil Cherilucci to the Palin grant.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions from the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Both abstaining, 5-0-0. Say what you did, Phil.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks.
That didn't hurt a bit.
Good luck, guys.
Like going to the doctors, right?
Okay, second-hand renewal licenses?
Alright, I'm gonna do these just together, 'cause they're all the same, basically.
Yep.
Alright, so I move we approve Gold World Inc., Clam Shop Antiques, and South Shore Generator for second-hand dealer licenses.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Both abstaining, 5-0-0. Next will be accept a donation from the Wareham Free Library.
Do they need to sign that? No, they'll, when they pick it up, they'll...
They pick it up. Wareham Free Library, donation.
Okay, next donation. Yes, I have a donation here, and a letter we wrote to Priscilla Porter, the Friends of the Wareham Free Library, and on behalf of the town, we are pleased to accept the $2,000 donation to the Wareham Free Library for the operating expense for the Spiny Memorial Branch. I move that we accept the grant.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions from the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Both abstaining, 5-0-0.
Sign that, Alan, please.
The next one, that's on hold, Eric?
Yes.
Thank you.
So any other business? Any other business not previously...
Mary?
No.
Peter?
None.
Patrick?
Nope.
Alan, no.
Town Administrator's report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the board tasked me to work with Mr. Bessie regarding the honoring Harry C. Bessie. We've had several conversations now, and we met out at the pier, the Onset Pier. Let me show you, there's a rare picture where Mr. Bessie's smiling, and Mr. Menard's also smiling, so, very rare. I don't think we see that too often with Mr. Menard smiling. So that's just giving you an idea of the location. So I'm going to ask specifically that the Wareham Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the permanent placement of a stone monument and plaque honoring Harry C. Bessie and his service to the town to be placed at the entrance to the Onset Pier. The town administrator and Mr. Bessie to finalize the permanent placement of the monument and plaque. That's where we believe the location should be. I don't see any changes in that, but that's...
So moved.
Yeah.
You want us to basically approve what you have the right to do?
Yes, and especially the permanent aspect of that.
Motion by Patrick to approve, second by Tony. Any questions, the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Both abstaining, 5-0-0.
I just wanna comment, I know Mike had a first approach, thus, close to three months ago, regarding this matter, and I'm glad that it's arrived at a resolution. I know there was a lot of emotion that went into this issue, there were a lot of different ideas bandied about, and I'm glad that we've been able to arrive at something that's appropriate in scale and is satisfactory to everyone. I'd like to thank Mike for his reasonableness in this regard.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Eric?
No, I just would like to shake Mr. Bessie's hand before he leaves, so, thank you very much.
There you go.
You have our permission, Derek.
Yes.
I really like this, by the way. This make, I like this a lot.
Well, that's what we're really supposed to be doing at the end of the day, is making something nice.
Worked out very nicely.
Yep.
Just for information also... We lost Dick Wheeler not too long ago, and they've actually approached myself about, and the town, about putting a, one of the benches in memory of Dick Wheeler, actually expanded the thought process, and we've actually reached out to Sandra about having a fundraiser to come up with making a kayak with Dick in a kayak and mounting it up on the bluff overlooking Onset Harbor. So I'll be bringing that forward soon.
Alright, next up liaison reports.
Nope, well said.
Mary, sorry. Peter?
None.
Patrick?
No, not today.
I'll try and do this very quickly. We had a meeting today with Mass DOT, the 6 and 28 Project is moving along, they've been contacting all the businesses with issues, etc. We've had some fruitful discussions again today, and everybody's on the same page, and I don't see any issues going forward. It'll be a two-season bump, two-year project, and we'll just keep moving along with that as well. That's really all we have, and next week will be my last week as chair, as we basically reconstitute the board every year, which is the way we do it and have to do it really, because the correct way, everybody should have a chance at this, and I'll make some comments at the end of that meeting.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I just wanna follow up, and I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Troppiano. I've been working with Mr. Ethier, and I've had a couple meetings as well over at CMAS. One of the concerns is that we have the private haulers' tip, if you will, on Wareham's account. Right now, that really doesn't cost us anything. However, we've been monitoring and working with CMAS, and part of the overall agreement is that we try not to allow the private haulers to take trash in from other communities and put it on our low tipping, if you will. We've worked with the new director over there, and there's a trend going on where, you know, we're much higher than we were in previous years, and CMAS has also changed its cost to the private haulers for tipping. So I have a real concern that they're hopping on, if you will, to the Wareham's account. So as such, Mr. Ethier has moved forward a letter that's gonna be sent out to all the haulers, bring them before the Board of Health. We're working on a comprehensive hauler regulation so that we have one hauler for this community, because it's not just about the trash, it's, I understand the people that could call me and say, "At 6:00 in the morning," they've got, over the entire week, they have trash trucks coming down, because one neighbor has ABC, one has Dooley, one has Howland. You know, we need to get this straightened out, and this is gonna move forward, that when that contract with CMAS goes, we're gonna be paying the normal rates, if you will, of anywhere from $75 a ton. And we can't absorb that without, frankly, without an override, and I don't see anybody granting that now. So we're gonna have to work to have one hauler doing it for the community for when the, for curbside collection.
This is something we talked about several years ago, about trying to come up with one company to come in and give us a rate for everybody, and try and help the residents as well. That $75 tip and fee is actually projected next year to be $150 a ton. So whatever the number is, it's gonna be that much worse, actually.
Sorry, can I just ask a question to clarify? How would somebody be doing this?
So what they would do is come in from another community, so let's say they're driving in from Plymouth, then they're picking up, they've already got trash that they've picked up along their route, they're picking up trash at a couple Wareham curbside locations, they drive over to CMAS and say, "It's Wareham's trash."
That's how they've been doing it.
Oh. So...
The numbers actually, and Derek knows this better than I do, but the numbers that I've gotten is that Wareham's numbers are really gotten high.
Is this correlated with any new companies that we've contracted with? No?
No, we've looked at, I sat down with some of the folks from CMAS, and they showed me some trends with the different types of haulers, especially the commercial packers, and suddenly we're seeing one company with 14 ton a day over three, four days. That's, you know...
Carver and Rochester having the same...
We've seen it on a bunch of... Mary, no, because they've got their own curbside pickup, but the others have seen a spiked, spike, and also, we're going to be increasing the tipping fees that the haulers pay, so that it's not quite the cash grab for them if they're doing it on Wareham's account.
Okay.
Welcome to the world of trash, unfortunately, going forward. Well said.
Actually cheaper when the mob controlled it.
Yeah, it was, but there's a different reason for that, though. It's called cash control. Alrighty. You got that, wasn't I?
You were.
Yeah, you were done.
Yeah, were you done? Okay.
I'm always done.
Alright, then I have minutes. I move we approve the March 19, 2019, and the March 26, 2019 minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions to the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Both abstaining, 5-0-0.
That's all I have for you this evening, sir.
Thank you all again, and hopefully everybody that could voted today, it's a privilege and to do, and unfortunately, we don't take advantage with a lot of people. Thank you, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
5-0-0. Thank you, Wareham, good night.
Right.